Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for June 6th. We were off last Monday, so that means we're going to need to brief tonight's agenda for June 6th, as well as the advanced agenda for June 13th. I have to leave early to attend the memorial service, and so I promised Council President Protam that I would try to handle all the things that needed votes and adjustments and things like that. So, we're going to go a little bit out of order. And the first thing on my list is on our consent agenda today. Oh, my first thing on my list is to call the roll.
Council President Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Bingle is absent.
All right. And Councilmember Bingle is in Washington, DC with other Spokane people and going to do some lobbying for us and learning for us, so appreciate that. Anyway, agenda changes. So, the first one I have is item number 11 on today's consent agenda. And there is a motion to defer it one week?
Two.
Two weeks. Two.
Is this the contract with vote?
Contract with vote.
Okay.
So, I'm looking for a motion to defer until June 20th.
So moved to defer.
Second.
Okay, so moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred. Councilmember Cathcart, I think you and Councilmember Bingle would like to both substitute a version and defer to June 27th a special budget ordinance, C36193.
Yep, so moved.
Okay. And the substitute version has been circulated, right?
I think so.
Yep. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? And I would like to propose an amendment to the substitution. For line 1, it says increase appropriations by $75,000, and the current, I would like to say increase appropriations by $175,000. And then in section B, where it says $25,000 to be used to fund a request for proposal to nonprofit entities that provide at-risk youth services, et cetera, I would like to change that to $125,000. But I cannot make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just point of clarification. For forfeiture funds, I believe that the chief has to sign off. Is that correct? And is he in agreement on that?
He has to sign off for the purpose, but I don't know that he has to sign off for the amount.
Okay.
But, I mean, we might have that discussion in two weeks or three weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
So, run the numbers past me. You're going to raise, you're going to increase it to $175,000?
No, so the increase is from $25,000 for youth services to $125,000. But in order to do that, up above on 1, we have to increase $75,000 to $175,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. So, that will be reflected when we vote again on the 27th. I don't know if Matt Boston is around. We had a.
He might be on the screen.
I don't know if you're on the screen, Matt. We had a question, I don't know, for finance, and again, I'm doing this out of order. We would normally do a briefing, but I want to do it while I'm here. On ordinance 36215, which is booking revenue from a potential lien on some property for an abatement. Is there anyone, was a question about what revenue source to use for that, whether or not we should use general fund reserves, since we don't have any hope of getting the money from the sale of the property? I don't know if there's anyone from finance on that.
Can we defer this?
I can chime in a little bit.
Okay.
It really wasn't worry about where the revenue is coming from. Right now, the way that the revenue is booked, it is booked for abatement revenue. What the concern is, is that it's going to net to probably a loss, invariably a loss, since the value of the property is about $175,000, the cost of this is about $475,000. We're most likely not going to recover that $300,000 delta, and that's the concern. So, either booking an allowance for doubtful accounts, so that it doesn't show that we're really expiring half a million dollars in revenue when we're probably not going to collect it.
But in order, so we have on our consent agenda a contract to pay for the abatement, which everyone's, I think, supportive of doing that, but we have to identify a revenue source to pay that contract. So, can we defer this special budget ordinance for a while while we work on that and still go ahead with the contract? Or do we have to land on a revenue source in order to sign the contract?
We'll have to land on a revenue source before actually signing the contract, because it's an expense that's going to have to be, it's going to have to have a funding source.
All right. So, just for clarification, essentially what we're saying is that we're basically saying that we expect to recoup the funds that we will spend on the demolition from the sale of the property, but it's most likely that we will either not, yeah, we will not recoup all of the funds, or we won't recoup any of the funds. And so, do we, we need to allocate money from a different revenue source than just that?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So, we're not saying that we're going to recoup the funds from the sale of the property. We're saying that we're going to put a lien on the property of which that the owner of the property is therefore liable for.
Right.
And to, and they would essentially pay us back about that half a million dollars. But communication efforts with this owner have been nilged, from my understanding.
Is there anyone from finance for, that was going to brief this issue?
Jason's out there.
Jason Ruffing, Council President.
All right.
It's from our code enforcement.
I know it's from code enforcement. Come on, come on down, Jason.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Jason Ruffing from code enforcement. I will most likely need some help on the financing terms, but yes, this is a large abatement of a fire damaged commercial building. The contract is to demolish it, and the demolition will include asbestos abatement as an alternate means work plan, which is part of why the cost is so high. Because of the fire damage, abatement contractors can't safely abate the asbestos. With any abatement, whether it's fencing, boarding, demolition, we lien the property with all of those costs, so that will happen here. So, the short-term result is city expense with a lien on the property, on the property's taxes. And then, if that lien is not paid by ownership, which would be their responsibility, it would go through the tax foreclosure process.
Okay.
One other quick clarification, there's actually two parcels involved here, so there will be two parcels that will be leamed. Those might have different tax foreclosure timelines. They might have, one owner might pay the lien and the other one might not. All of those things are yet to be determined. But the short-term result is a lien on the property taxes, and that will happen upon approval of the contract.
All right. So, somebody tells me that Paul and Josie is on the, on the virtual. Paul, can you weigh in on what revenue source would be the most appropriate, given that the property is worth less than the cost and there might be other lien holders on the property?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I think as Matt described it, it is accurate. The only piece I would add is I don't think we need a revenue source identified. We really just need the budget authority to enter the contract to do the work. The risk, I think, is that at the end of the year, if the DSC fund is running negative, it would have to be replenished somewhere else, just so that you don't finish in the red as well.
So, I guess I'm still confused on the ordinance, special budget ordinance in front of us this evening. If, where the revenue, where are we saying the money is coming to pay for this contract? Because it doesn't, because we're not, we're not going to have the money in hand. So, I'm just wondering if we should say increase revenue by, you know, general fund reserves or something like that? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, the revenue piece, it, the expenditures are going to come out of the DSC fund.
Okay.
This just provides the budget authority to enter the contract and do the work. Where the funding comes from would be wherever DSC funding comes from. So, they may have other revenue coming in from other places that would be able to cover this expense. But by year-end, if the fund was in danger of going over the budget authority or being out of balance, then we would make a subsequent adjustment through an SBO, which could be a transfer from the general fund.
Okay.
To cover it.
Okay. So, if I understand you, what you're saying is the fund that this would come out of is budgeted for this type of purpose, so it doesn't need a special budget ordinance to do it, but if it runs out of money, then we might need to do a special budget ordinance? Is that?
Yeah, they need the budget authority to make the contract. Capacity and their other type codes and their expense lines to do this type of work without this increase to their, to their overall appropriation authority in the DSC fund 4700.
All right. So, we're, we on council are.
Clear as mud.
Looking like we don't know really exactly what's going on. But Matt, I just want to ask you then, do you think we're okay to vote on this as is? Or are there amendments that you're looking to suggest for us?
I don't necessarily encourage the booking of the revenue side of it, just because from, from the law of conservative conservatism, I don't think that revenue is factual in the fact that it'll actually be realized at some point in the future.
Okay.
If you were to net out the value of the property, which I've, based on the conversations that I've had, is about $175,000, and that's, that's the two properties together with the actual expenditure cost, which is, I believe, $475,000, we're still at about a $300,000 loss, that if you book the revenue and the expenditure, you're kicking the can down the road to realize that $300,000 loss in a future year when we actually take ownership of the property. Right now, if we were to book the revenue, just like you're saying, we're essentially saying we're going to receive that from the owner of the property at some point in time in the future.
All right.
When in reality, we will not, most likely, receive that, those funds. What, best-case scenario is, is we're going to receive the property, and that is going to be whatever the value of that property is against any other sort of lien that are out there, against property taxes with the county, et cetera. What Paul is saying is that we need to, we need to vote on the SBO, because we have to have the expenditure side of it.
Okay.
We don't have the expenditure, we don't have the expenditure authority within this fund at this point in time. The problem is, is.
But let me just cut, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what, so this special budget ordinance does two things. It increases the appropriation, which we need to fund the contract, and it increases revenue. So, are you saying that we could drop the increased revenue and still do the appropriation and get the contract done? Or do we need to do both?
You can, but the problem being is that at the tail end of the year, that fund could surpass the, the overall expenditure allotment that it has.
Right.
And then you're going to have to, then you're going to have to put funding from the general fund to cover this.
Right. All right.
Should we defer this?
Paul is standing up.
So, the, I mean, so I'm hearing several council members saying we should defer, but that means that we would have to defer the abatement contract, too. So, that's the challenge. I'm trying to figure out how we can move forward on the abatement contract, and it sounds like we can either get rid of the increased revenue line and do something at the end of the year if we need to, or we could change increased revenue to come from the general fund, unrestricted reserves. But I'm, I'm not the finance person. I'm just trying to figure out how we pass something that will allow us to do the contract but doesn't mislead us. Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Council President. The only thing I would, I'm not sure of, and maybe Jason could weigh in, is if you remove the revenue completely, if that impacts anyway, the ability to put a lien on the property, if you need to just show the revenue or book the revenue in that respect. So, that's the only piece I'm not sure of, just because I haven't really worked on this type of issue before as well.
All right. Well, why don't we do this? So, we won't defer completely, but we'll give it an hour or so to, the finance people can talk about it and come up with some language, just that work for people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so we can stop talking about. Can I ask, Jason, do you have any last words here?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, if it helps. Any substandard building case work, whether that be demolition, fencing, boarding, always does come from that DSC fund, and then the lien is placed on the back end to recover those costs to that same fund. So, that's the typical process, and I believe that's what's occurring here. It's just that the dollar amount obviously would exceed what we have planned for demolition expenditures in a typical year.
So, Council President, I'm concerned that this particular owner has other property in the city, a lot of other property, and so there may be an opportunity to recoup what clearly this is imbalanced. So, there may be an opportunity to recoup, and I don't want to lose that opportunity.
Understood.
All right. Well, more at 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So, moving to ordinance, regular ordinance 36156 on page 10, that is the streamlining of the Spokane Police Department organizational chart. And as I sent out an email last week, the administration and the chief and Councilmember Cathcart and I and others, we've sat down and figured out a solution to this. We deferred it from December, and there are two spots that have just been unfilled for years and years, and they're not planning on filling them, and so we would take them out and leave the two spots that are filled as sub-departments. And so, I'm looking for a motion to substitute the version that I circulated last week.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. And I'm going to discuss the potential veto matter in a moment, but I'm checking to see if anyone else has any other changes for tonight's agenda or other agendas suggested.
Number 18.
Number 18.
Does it matter?
Ah, yes.
For what? Need a suspension of rules?
So, yes, number 18 has been requested to add to the agenda, and to do that, we would need to suspend the rules. That's a consulting agreement with Makers Architecture. Is there a motion to suspend the rule, council rules?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add item 18 to tonight's agenda?
Council President, I'll move that we add OPR 2022-0427 to today's agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Moving to second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. Then, that brings us to, it's on our agenda tonight, a special consideration of a mayor veto of ordinance C36209. I've checked with City Legal, and the last time we did this, we did not have public comment. I'm going to rule as the chair that we're not going to have public comments subject to four council members saying, no, you want public comment. So, that's my initial ruling, is no public comment, because we heard a lot from everyone on this already. But Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appeal the ruling of the chair on that.
Okay. Is there a second? Going once, twice, three times? Okay. So, that appeal fails for lack of a second, and so there's not going to be comment on that tonight. Any other things before I go?
Before you leave?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes.
The city clerk has requested to read an announcement from the Salary Review Committee.
2022 Salary Review Commission decision. This is to provide notification that on May 27, 2022, the Salary Review Commission's 2022 final report pertaining to its decision establishing the salaries of the mayor, council president, and city council members of the city of Spokane was filed with the city clerk's office. Based upon the Salary Review Commission's decision, the salaries of the elected positions of mayor, council president, and council members for 2023 will reflect a 3% increase and shall be as follows effective January 1, 2023. Mayor, $176,500. Council president, $65,137. Council members, $49,063. For 2024, the salaries of the elected positions of mayor, council president, and council members shall reflect a 1.5% increase in BS follows effective January 1, 2024. Mayor, $179,148. Council president, $66,114. Council members, $49,799. Pursuant to SMC 2.05.060, salary increases or decreases shall be subject to a referendum petition by the citizens in the same manner as the city ordinance upon filing of such petition within 30 days after filing of the salary scheduled by the commission. The deadline for filing such a referendum is June 27, 2022. Thank you.
All right. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to Council President Protam, Lori Kinnear, and City Administrator Johnny Perkins. Thanks, everyone. I'll see you back at 6:00.
Thank you. So, Mr. Perkins, you want to take it away?
Yes. Thank you, Council President Protam and Council President. We'll talk to you later. For the Monday, June 6, advanced agenda, on the consent agenda, item number one, purchase from DNL Supply Incorporated of sewer and stormwater access frame and covers. The briefer for this item is Mike Lowden.
Thank you. This item is for sewer, stormwater, access frames and covers, which we affectionately know as manhole rings and covers. This is to support regular construction and maintenance throughout the year. Deedell Foundry was low bid at $149,057.50, and the recommendation is to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Items 2 and 3 respectively. Item 2 is a contract amendment with Elijah Oil Company for one purchase of ultra-low sulfur. Item number 3 is a contract renewal with Applied Industrial Technologies for ASNE to purchase and installation of conveyor feed belts at the Waste Energy Facility. The briefer is David Payne.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. The first one is a value blanket amendment with EJ Oil for low sulfur diesel and supporting equipment. The contract ran from October 1, 2019, and ends in September 30, 2022. The additional amount is needed due to the escalating costs of diesel and fuel prices. Any questions on that one? The second one is contract renewal, one of three, with Applied Industrial Technologies for the ASNE purchase of an installation of grizzly belt, feed belt at the Waste Energy Plant. This contract runs from June 1, 2022, through May 31, 2023, with a cost not to exceed $120,000 plus tax. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Council President Protam, item 4 is the contract amendment to the downtown parking and business improvement area with the Downtown Spokane Partnership, and for this, for the Clean Team and Ambassador Services. I do have counsel.
Piccolo can probably brief us on that.
I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Pic, if we want more clarity, it is for the Safe and Clean, but if you have questions, Mr. Piccolo's in the.
Mr. Piccolo. Do we have any, I guess if you have any questions, we would have.
If you have any questions, you can be asking him.
Do we have?
We're all good.
Questions from council?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Do we know, is the Downtown Spokane Partnership in agreement with the contract language? That's my only question.
Yes, they are. Councilmember Cathcart. All right. Item 5, lease, lease agreement amendments with the West Central Community Development Association and the Northeast Community Center Organization. The presenter is Carly Couright.
Good afternoon, council. This is the lease agreements with Northeast Community Center and West Central Community Center Organizations. It's a 10-year lease. I did have a request this morning that came in, so I apologize to put this in front of you, but Northeast Community Center did have a new opportunity from the state commerce for an additional grant, but it would require a 15-year lease. So, I spoke with administration, were amenable to changing their lease agreement from 10 to 15, but I think that would require a motion from one of you to do so.
If our rules are still suspended, I'll make the motion that we update this with that, to reflect that language.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Did you have any more clarity on the opportunity that was being presented to them?
Thank you for bringing that point up. So, that was the other reason this was deferred, was that, that holdup on if we were going to, how we were going to fund the $500,000 that was passed in a resolution back in February. So, there was a lot of spirited discussion. We did get some clarity on a SIP loan, and that path could be a way forward. However, I do believe there is agreement that we will not move forward with that and instead use ARPA funds.
Okay. And just for clarity, $500,000 each?
That is, that will be part of the ARPA.
Yes, not total.
Right. So, each community center will get $500,000.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
So, I, so the 15-year is in conjunction with this particular piece, not another opportunity?
It's a different one. It's a new opportunity.
New opportunity.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Thank you.
What is the new opportunity?
So many things going on. So many things going on. So the new opportunity is also with Department of Commerce, building, have to look it up here. It's a new grant opportunity that they were really excited about. Let me see if I can pull it up.
And as you're looking, the only thing else required-
Building Communities Fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart.
Is our commitment for the extension of the lease at this time. No other, as you're reading that, Councilmember Cathcart, anything else required of us?
No. Well, it's actually, now that I'm looking at this closer, they're actually asking for the lease to be 16 years. Am I reading that right?
I think because we were currently, it ends at 2023, we were adding 10 years on to that. So, I mean, effectively, we're just going to add an extra five years on to what we already had. So, it appears to be that a lot of the grants from Commerce, which makes sense, is a commitment that you're going to be in that building if we're going to give you the money. So, we've had a long history of renting those, leasing those buildings out. So, I don't think that the 15 years makes any difference. Over the 10, we would still continue to be making that relationship. So, I appreciate your-
What Dave says here is, the awardees must have binding control of the project site via ownership or executed long-term lease of at least 15 years. So that's the requirement.
Any other comments, discussion, questions?
No.
Go ahead.
Assuming that if that came up with West Central or East Central, we would do the same thing, right?
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you were making the motion, the rules were still suspended, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah. I did make the motion, I think.
Yes, you did.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And then I asked for discussion. We've, we're done with discussing. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. All right, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Item six, contract with MJ Takasaki for demolition, including a special abatement of a substandard fire-damaged abandoned unit at 801 North Regal Streets.
And so I think we probably discussed this-
We did.
Ad nauseam, and, sorry. And we'll then get more information before we vote on this. Thank you. Didn't want to take up more of your time.
That's, we vote on this tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get some language before we vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffing. Item seven, consultant agreement with SafeBuild Washington for professional on-call review services. And the presenter is Dermot Murphy.
Good afternoon, council members. Dermot Murphy, Deputy Building Official. In front of you, you have SafeBuild's contract with a focus on residential plan review for the city. It's a new two-year contract for a total of $180,000. And SafeBuild was selected for this contract out of a group of eight plan review service companies. Contract with SafeBuild allows us to meet the residential plan review timelines, enables the plan review of complex projects, and provides us with workload flexibility. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Item eight, contract amendment with Abaddon Reprographics for high-speed, large-format printing and building and binding for the Engineering Services Department. Briefer is Dan Bueller.
Good afternoon. Item eight is the proposed contract amendment with Abaddon Reprographics for printing and binding, which are provided primarily to engineering services. The contract runs through May 31, 2023, and we're requesting an additional $150,000 to the contract. The bulk of the expenditures to Abaddon are associated with various Public Works contracts specbooks, and the charges billed by Abaddon are billed then to those individual Public Works projects.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Item nine, a contract with JR Swigger Company for the partial roof replacement at the Combined Communications Building. Briefer this afternoon is Fire Chief David Stockdale.
Good afternoon, council. David Stockdale, Division Chief for Spokane Fire. Fires asking for your approval for a contract with JR Swigger Pasco. They were the low bidder for the partial roof replacement at our dispatch center. The cost is not to exceed $1,207,000, and that's including tax. Pending your questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is it a flat roof?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I got to ask this. And I, Councilmember Kinnear probably answered it, but I'll have to hear myself ask it. Why doesn't TREC pay any of this?
It is, we will be reimbursed. It is a split cost.
Oh, good, okay.
So, we're just getting the contract. We'll get it paid for, and then we'll be reimbursed according to the inter-local agreements.
Perfect.
Great question. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item 10, contract renewal with FA Bartlett Tree Expert Company for on-call arborist services. The briefer is Thea Prince.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. I'm not going to turn my camera on. I'm having computer problems. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
This is our first renewal to a citywide master contract for on-call arborist services, $250,000 per year, and they did not increase pricing at all.
Great.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Items 11 and 12. Item 11 is a contract with Voight Management Corporation for technical resources.
Wait, wait.
We deferred?
Deferred that?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 12, Mr. Sloan, contract renewal with NDM Technologies for the purchase of LogRhythm annual maintenance and support.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council members. Note on item 11. Item 11 was an effort to renew our agreement with Voight. The reason we have to defer it is that it's under a new RFP, so we couldn't amend the previous one. That, the current contract comes to a closure. This new one is based on a new RFP we established. So the verbiage that Voight were requiring in the contract is why we deferred it. We didn't want to rush it. So we'll, I believe, two weeks will give ample time for us to review and submit for your committee review, the new contract. So that's the backstory on item 11. Item 12, OPR 0419 is a request for maintenance. This is the second year we have for LogRhythm. LogRhythm is the tool that tracks all of what we do at the server level. In the event we have a cybersecurity event or a trouble event, this is a device that collects that information. We have resources that would allow us to analyze these events almost in real time, but currently, but more importantly, it's a log that we keep this information for a minimum of a year in the case that we have to do research. So it's a very critical item in our efforts for cybersecurity. So asking your approval for the maintenance renewal. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Item 13, contract amendment with GSI Water Solutions for the analysis of an additional site across the river and addition of one monitoring well for the groundwater development evaluation. Presenter is Catherine Miller.
Thank you, councils. Item number 13 is a continuation of our study to look at developing wells on our well-electric site. During the kickoff of this study, more information was brought to bear that we have some property across the river that would be worthwhile studying as part of this. So this is what this item is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Item 14, loan agreement with the State of Washington Department of Ecology. Presenter is Mark Pappage.
Thank you. Item number 14 is our 2021-2023 stormwater capacity grant with the Department of Ecology. This is a $70,000 grant, no match, and we generally use it to meet our permit requirements. So something we do every two years. Questions?
Thank you, Mark. Item 15, Council President Pro Tem, I believe we discussed during the Public Safety and Community Health meeting this afternoon.
Thoroughly, yes.
So-
Any questions? Any other questions, I should say? Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you. Items 16 and 17, stat and items on our advanced briefing agenda. 16A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of parks and libraries. Claims and payments, 16B, of a previously approved obligation, including those of parks and libraries. Claims approved by their respective boards. Payroll claims of previously approved obligations, 16C. And then item 17, city council minutes. Both those items and their appropriate information will be completed for council session this evening. Do we need to include item 18 as a briefing that we added, or is-
Terry, I think we do. Yes.
We already added it, but I don't know if Mary's here.
So I s-
Did we? It should be.
He was here earlier. Once we added it, Maureen left, so.
She left as soon as we added it. At least I saw her leaving.
Well, we have been briefed on this in various committees.
Couple times, I think, actually.
Do, does anybody have questions about this? Is a Logan Nap- Okay.
Okay. Then, moving along to, I believe, the first two. Initially on our advanced briefing, we have discussed when Council President Beggs was here. The next item, Councilmember Kinnear, is Traffic Calming Measures Fund. So I'll turn that over to you. I wasn't sure if there's anything you wanted to add to that.
Okay, so, did you, wait a minute, we did Development Service Center Fund? Did we already do that?
That was with Mr. Ruffing earlier.
Yep, yep, okay. Yes. Traffic calming. So we had a request by Captain Mydl to do some abatement along North Division, and so this money would be specifically for that. And that is for overtime for police to patrol. That's for two officers to patrol the North Division corridor during the evening hours and the parking lots where the people gather to race. So, Councilmember Cathcart, no more racing, I'm sorry, for the remainder of the summer. We also talked about, and this is that piece, but we also talked about doing increased enforcement. But what I need from each council member is where you want that enforcement to be. And I still have not received that. So if you want to-
I didn't realize you were waiting on that. Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
If you get me a list and talk to your folks in your neighborhoods, then we can proceed with that.
And is this essentially covering the overtime costs to-
This is covering the overtime cost for the North Division one.
Okay.
Yeah. The other one won't need overtime costs. It's just to be very specific on where we want to target our emphasis in our various neighborhoods.
Gotcha.
I'll pitch you my list tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Our next item, American Rescue Plan Fund. This action arises from the need to provide additional appropriation authority for the Centennial Trail renovations to the Don Cordon Bridge due to increased construction costs. Our presenter is our Parks and Recreation Director, Garrett Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and council. So, this is after a previous discussion when we came forward with an SBO for an additional $750,000 going towards the Don Cordon Bridge. We presented at that time, we had a delta of 1.5 million with the added construction cost and inflation. The original proposal was to split the 750, 750 coming from ARP, and then the other 750 coming from Park Fund. Through the SBO, it was asked to come back through council at the May 9 Urban Experience Committee. Staff presented the additional projects. If we were able to have that additional 750,000 of ARPA funds of what we would be able to do in our Park Fund as far as improvements, and those improvements were the Wild Horse Park Playground and Walkway, 50% build out at the Coeur d'Alene Park Irrigation, the Corbin Park Sports Court Repair, Franklin Park Walkway Phase 2, and then the Liberty Park Playground and Restroom. And this would go towards the Hardscape and Shelter improvements. Any questions?
So, no delays? They're all going to get done as expected if we approve the 750?
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to clarify, so for folks, because the spokesman had a story a couple of weeks ago that essentially said that these projects were going to be delayed. They didn't follow up with the context of this additional vote.
As far as coming back, yep, with the 750.
So just for reassurance for folks who've been under the understanding that those projects were delayed, they're not assuming we approve this allocation.
And we do have projects that are being deferred, correct?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah. So as we discussed, you know, the total deferral right now is about 1.37 million for the other additional projects that we had on our capital list as a result of COVID.
Okay. And I did put that on my request list for, my personal request list, so we'll see.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, there's no emergency ordinances, but under resolutions and final reading ordinances, our first resolution is appointing initial members to the city council's Equity Subcommittee. Councilmember Wilkerson, I have you under that.
I can take that. So, last, over the last couple of years and what's happened with COVID, we looked at how do we operationalize people in our various cultural communities to be part of the city structure. It is an advisory group of people that will be a resource not only to council, but to administration to give us a different perspective and a resource on what the needs are in our city, how we going forward. We interviewed all the people that's on the briefing paper with a wide variety of people and careers and knowledge and experience in our community. So I'm excited to look forward, as we go forward, to have these people be a part of the conversations. Again, they are an advisory group, but these are voices that we have not heard within our system.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. Our next resolution is approving settlement for the Hain case from injuries sustained on May 31, 2020. Presenter is our city attorney, Mike Ormsby.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and council members. This is a case that we briefed to the council about a month ago, where we were attempting to resolve a case that arose out of the events that happened on May 31. And we were able to resolve the case for the amount discussed with the council at that time. And so this resolution would authorize us entering into the settlement agreement with the plaintiff, and the mayor would execute it, and we would have the case resolved. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City-
Is this your last time, Mike? I just want to know. Will you be before us one more time before you leave?
I have the advanced, something on the advanced agenda for next week.
Okay, all right.
So I'll be back one more time tonight.
Okay, all right, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next two resolutions. One is dealing with a loan and grant agreement with the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Cochrane Basin Stormwater Treatment Facility. The other agreement is a funding agreement between the city of Spokane and State of Washington Department of Ecology for the TJ Menach Water Quality Improvements Project. Our briefer on both items is Mark Pappage.
Thank you. So the first one is a combination grant slash loan agreement with the Department of Ecology. We've got $5 million in grant money on that one, and then, and then we're basically putting 1.7 million, which covers our 25% match on that. So, interest rate on the loan piece is 2.4% for 20 years. So any questions on that one before I move on? Great. Then the second one, the second one's actually got two agreements in it. These are existing grant agreements that we have also for Cochrane Basin projects, where we're adding in loan money to cover our match. So the first one is for the TJ Menach Water Quality Improvement Project. We're adding about 1.4 million in loan money on that one. Interest rates, 2.6% for 20 years. The other one is for the Cochrane Basin Infiltration Ponds, which many of you know is a disc golf course. We're adding $837,500 in loan money, and that's 2% interest for 20 years on that one as well. So, any question on that one? Great. Did you want me to come back tonight too for these? Typically, we don't, but I can if you need to.
I don't think so, no.
Only if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Pappage. Our next item, streamlining the organization of the Spokane Police Department. We discussed with Council President Beggs when he was here-
Yes.
-a short time ago. So we'll move on from that. The next ordinance is vacating the alley between Pacific Avenue and Second Avenue from the east line of Sherman to the west line of Sheridan. And our presenter is Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, council. I'll see if I can actually pull this one up here. Doesn't look like it wants to close. Oh. Thanks. And we had the hearing on this alley. See if I can pull it up a little bit here. We had the hearing on the vacation of this alley between Pacific and Second from Sheridan to Sherman back in February of this year. It was approved subject to conditions. We had the first reading also that night. So, the conditions were, they had to pay us $43,200 bucks for the vacation of that alley, and they had to do closure- and they had to do closure work on each end of that alley where it ties into the Sheridan and Sherman. They've performed all that, so we're just here before you to do the final reading of that alley. The intent for the vacation, they were having a lot of vandalism in that alley, and they were actually intend to actually gate it at the end to control a little bit of what goes on as far as people beating on buildings. We did reserve easements in there for, I think, five utility purveyors. They were... Looks like we had Lumen, Avista, Comcast, Seo, and Verizon, all fiber outfits. We did not have any city utilities in that alley. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eldon. Do you mind staying to do your next two?
Sure.
Before we do that. So the next final reading ordinance is amendment ordinance that vacated Gardner Avenue from the extended line west of Keystone Edition.
We had the original hearing on this vacation. This is right over there as part of the stadium. Right now, it's between Howard and Wyston, that piece of garden there that's really kind of like part of the driveway to the parking lots. And that is partly where they're going to build a stadium across it at this point in time. So we had the original hearing back in, I think it was 1991, on that one. And we reserved an easement in there for Lumen at that time. So we're just here before you to actually release that easement to, for Lumen in there so we can actually move ahead and they want to build a building across that alley. So that's primarily the purpose for amending the original ordinance was to release the easement for Lumen. So be happy to answer any questions on that one.
Thank you, Eldon. And Mr. Brown's final briefing item is a first reading ordinances, ordinance, amending ordinance that vacated Napa Street from Pinecrest Avenue.
We originally vacated Napa Street between 26th and Pinecrest back in 1995 on there, and we had easements in there reserved for Comcast, City of Spokane, Avista, and Lumen. They were full width easement for that entire length on there. That little area you see in blue on there is we want to release 10 feet on the west side of that easement for a house that wants to be built there on the, just to the west side of that. That extra 10 feet gives them some extra footage on there. We did talk to all the utility purveyors, and they were in favor of releasing that west 10 feet of the easement. So we're just in here to amend that original ordinance to reduce the easement down from the full width to eliminate 10 feet of it, of that easement on the west side, so that house can be built. So we're doing a new first reading of that one today, and then next week we intend to do the final reading if the council approves it. So be happy to answer any questions on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next final reading ordinance is related to special events and activities. Our presenter is our Director of Office Neighborhood Services, Carley Courtright.
Hello again. So for this one, I met with the special event organizers, the large ones, about two weeks ago now, and really got some feedback from them of what they wanted to see. I shared some numbers with them regarding sort of the impact that their events have on our general fund. I know there were some numbers thrown out during their, the last council meeting. It turns out that really we only bring in a small percentage of that local tax. We only have about 1% of it is unrestricted funds that come into the city. Kind of just doing a rough estimate on what special events bring in economic impact wise. Their impact of the general fund is probably, I mean generously, less than a percent. It's probably less, more like half a percent. So, shared that with them, shared the impact of their events on the police overtime and what their budget is. About 14% of police overtime is spent on special events. So shared all this information, and the, the answer was still that they didn't think that they should be charged anything was pretty much the consensus there. So I will share, Councilmember Wilkerson, I did get some feedback from Pig Out in the Park. They did express to me that they have applied for LTAC funds in their 40 years. They said they've applied about 20 times and only received it twice, and it was a pretty nominal amount. So that's consistent with what I've heard from other events, but at least that was a concrete answer that they were able to give me. But it does appear that getting some of that, the offsets is not there. But anyway, that's kind of where we're at. I know I met with administration, with our city administrator. We had a couple of other ideas to bounce, but after meeting with the council sponsors, we're kind of leaving it alone is what was proposed. So with that, I guess I will open it up to questions.
Go ahead.
Just a question, was Pig Out, the Pig Out folks involved in those discussions?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
And I'll just comment, historically, those LTAC funds have not been a big pocket, bucket of money, and so it has been competitive for, it was established for new events, kind of getting them going since Pig Out had a history. Many, that being said, there are other resources now that, that is available to those entities to help offset some of their costs, at least over the next three years going forward as they make plans of how they want to fund their events. So, thank you, Carley.
Go ahead.
Yeah, for clarity, when you said that they, I assume you mean collectively all of the events bring in about, or affect about half percent?
Correct.
Well, I, I give, if you do the math on that, that's about 1.1 million. And so I'm wondering, kind of right now, what, what do we spend relative to what we receive?
Right now, the, again, based on 2019 dollars, which was the last time we really had anything, excuse me, it was just shy of half a million, so about 430,000, as memory serves. When you add that 20% on for the police, it's going to come out to just shy of half a million for sure for 2022.
So if we generate 1.1, I mean, there's some room there to?
We do bring in more than, than we spend. That is, that is fair.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, I think it's also important to point out that we're only asking for cost recovery for police and public safety. There are other costs associated with events like cleanup and a lot of other expenses. So we don't have the full scope of those costs, but this is just partial cost recovery.
I think, thank you, Councilmember Sapon. That was, that was another thing, kind of like we're going, why we're asking for that increase in the application fee is, you know, the Spokane Police Department has one sergeant that is fully dedicated to special events. You know, so that position right there, we're not getting really any quote unquote "cost recovery" for, but they're 100% dedicated to that for all events, free speech, all of those things going on. Within Office of Neighborhood Services, Development Services, Streets, everybody that participates, parks, there's, there's extra cost of personnel as well, just reviewing those. So, I mean, I think the city has made a pretty good commitment to helping have good events in our city. You know, and I would say it's a overall consensus by the events, particularly the parades of not paying for anything. I don't want to speak for an event who might have the opportunity to come up here and speak themselves, but there's at least one event that is more open to paying for something than some of the other ones. But it's that 2025 cost that they were feeling like that's a little more than we feel comfortable paying with. So, but in general, the parades just really felt that this was something that should be gifted to them as a free community event.
And did we factor in the fire department costs? Because?
Fire department costs is within that, that includes that.
Okay.
So that's that 434. The fire department, there's, I don't include them as much because it's relatively small. I want to say it's $50,000 total for all of the fire. We have very few events that use fire services. I think just in comparison with Hoop Fest, which is around $150,000 total, I think only about 25, 30,000 of that is fire, the rest is police, so.
We use the EMS piece?
Yeah, it's the head med teams, yeah, is what it is. So, and they are there, it's just, it's less, it's just smaller. So it is included in that grand total, but I just don't talk about them as much because it's less of an impact.
Any other questions for Carley?
Just a comment, so really, Carley, I know there's a cost, but this is a cost that before, it could fluctuate what the cost was of their events. This now gives them a base that they can work from and actually plan for going forward.
Correct.
And I think that's just as critical as anything for any event planner to know upfront what the cost is and who's ever helping them to underwrite that. So that, we are a little bit ahead of what we were before with this being part of it.
And I think that's a great point, councilmember. I think the other, the other piece of this is it is a flat fee, it's capped. One of the questions that did come up, which I think is why we still have the clause in that says this can be waived or changed based on resolution, is what if an event changed because of this impact? Like, we've got to bring down our costs, so, you know, Hoop Fest decides to have a smaller footprint, or one of the parades decides to shorten the length of their parade. That would make their costs go down with that, therefore, and I said, I think we're all very open to coming back and revisiting and still keeping true to what we're trying to propose here.
Any other comments or questions for Carley? Thanks, and we've been working on this a long time.
We have.
Years, so, thank you for your diligence.
I'll be here tonight as well if there are any questions. Okay, thank you.
Council President Protam, can I just acknowledge Carley's role in this? She's spending a tremendous amount of time as well, bringing all the parties together, taking all of your input and putting a proposal together for your consideration. I want to just thank her for that.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, because she's been working on this for years.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that support. Our final item on the Monday, June 6, advanced briefing is a first reading ordinance relating to membership terms for Spokane Park Board members. Our briefer, once again, is our Parks and Recreation Director, Garrett Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Thank you again, council. So this is, would be an ordinance proposed for park board term limits. Currently, under the charter, it is very detailed that you have a maximum of two five-year terms. Currently, though, under the SMC, under Section 0401030D, an incumbent member does have, or does, shall continue to serve and remain a voting member beyond the expiration of his or her term until the replacement member has been appointed. So this would be adding an additional section under the park board, under the SMC, to state now withstanding, under the SMC 0401030, or 0D, a park board member whose term has expired may not continue to serve after expiration of the member's term. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council President Protam, that concludes the advanced briefing for June 6.
Okay, and we don't have to vote on that, do we, Terry, or do we?
We just need to approve the agenda as a whole, since it wasn't briefed previously.
Okay, okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved to approve the agenda?
Take it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Great. Thank you, Terry. Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Council President Protam. Moving now to the advanced agenda for Monday, June 13. Under the consent agenda, item one, a 10-year site lease acknowledgement agreement with new singular wireless for placement of cellular equipment. The briefer is Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, Council President Protam and councilmembers. This is a new site lease agreement with singular wireless. We have multiple sites with many of the vendors for cell service. We use partnership with the utilities for their structures, water towers, different reservoir buildings, things like that. This puts a new site down on Thomas Mallon Road and provides fairly substantive revenues over the next 10 years, so. Any questions?
Questions? No, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Consent agenda, item number two, water reservoir easement and temporary permit to enter easement with Spokane School District. Briefer is our Director of Public Works, Marlene Feist.
Good afternoon, City Council, Johnny Perkins, thank you. So we've been talking about the need to add an additional water tank in the high system for a number of years now, and we've been working to identify sites that would be good for this new tank. We have worked with Spokane Public Schools to locate the tank on an unused portion of the property that is around Hamlin Elementary on the South Hill. The school board voted on May 25 in a 5-0 vote to approve both the permanent easement for the tank and also a construction easement, which is a little bit of a bigger footprint for that. So we now are bringing those easements forward for council consideration.
Any questions for Marlene? So I just want to thank you, Dan, Kyle. This has been a long and arduous journey. Started out wanting to do something in Hamlin Park, which met with fierce opposition. So we're at this point, and to me, this is, you know, we do need this for redundancy and for fire suppression for three months of the year. So, just want to point that out.
I think it was a great compromise with the school district. I'm looking forward to some cool water tower with some cool logo up there, but I think the compromise was great.
Yeah, we're going to work with the kids to get them involved there. And, you know, it really is part of that partnership that we've really invested in in the last five years or so that included transfers of sites to the school district, library and school co-locations, improvements to Cook Street at the, at the campus there in northeast. So all of those things have really, you know, come together, so.
Thank you.
Marlene, do you guys have any feedback from, from the community up there? Because I, I've been looking for some feedback on this, and I haven't received a lot of direct communication.
Yeah, so, so we did a number of things. We met with neighbors up there outside and talked to them. We went to the parent teacher group at the school and participated with that. And then the school board, of course, had public testimony last week on that. There was one speaker at that speaking against it, and then a couple. And then the principal from the school spoke in favor of it. So that was, it was pretty light in terms of public comment at that point.
Okay, thank you.
I think after we were going to put it in the park, this was kind of a, you know, oh, okay, a relief.
Right.
So we did have one opponent, though.
Okay.
Mr. Perkins?
Item three, low bid for the Sundance Three Force Main project. Briefer is Dan Bueller.
Item three is blank on your agenda, but we just opened bids. And in an infrastructure of Spokane is the apparent low bid at $447,145, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project replaces the PVC sewage force main with ductile iron pipe in northwest Spokane. The city sewer department has an ongoing program to replace these PVC force mains with ductile iron due to past problems. This project is funded with sewer rate fees. The low bid from Hamlin Infrastructure is a preconally 52,000 or 10% below the engineer's estimate, and a total of three bids were received.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Items four and five. Item four, contract amendment with outside counsel for legal services in the matter of West Terrace Golf versus the City of Spokane. Item five, contract amendments with outside counsel, some law group. 5A, Travis J. Wise versus Governor Jay Ensley. 5B, Michael Bacon versus the City of Spokane. The presenter is our City Attorney, Mike Ormsby.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and members of the City Council. The first contract amendment is for the water rates case that the city's been involved in since about the time I came, so about five years. The end is close, closer in sight than it has been for a long time, and we just had an argument before the Court of Appeals, and we hope that that will help resolve the case. But we want to make sure that we have sufficient money to close that case out. So we're asking the council for approval to extend that contract by another $50,000 with our outside counsel. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if any councilmember has any. And the second recommendation we have today is to add on to the two contracts we have with outside counsel. And we discussed both of these at the committee meeting earlier today. And I'd be happy to respond to any additional questions or concerns that might have come up since that briefing a couple of hours ago. Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Item six, multiple purchases from Core and Maine for copper for the water department to keep operations moving forward. Our presenter is Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, council. The water department is seeking approval on copper purchases. We initially made two purchases of copper from Core and Maine. Those purchases were bid, they were below council approval limits. We received a third order, shipment of copper now, which puts us above council limit, and we're asking for approval on all three of them to fall within compliance. That total purchase is right at $79,146. Yes, sir.
What's the, the usage?
The usage is, the 1-inch copper, it's used for new developments of residential services.
But have we done a comparison with HDPE to see what? But have we done a comparison with HDPE to see what the cost comparison would be?
We have compared on cost. Copper does not compare in HDPE in cost. Longevity is, is up for debate still. We are currently installing two-inch HDPE. We are installing one-inch copper in the right-of-way, and all on-property has changed over to one-inch HDPE now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Searle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you. Items seven and eight, report of the mayor pending claims of payments, previous approval obligations for parks and library. Item eight, city council meeting minutes. Both of those items, we filled in with their information during the council meeting on Monday, June 13th. Under special budget ordinances, our first item arises from the need for capital expenditures in the asset management fund of fire and the asset management fund, capital fund for police. And our presenter is Paul and Josie.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, City Council. This special budget ordinance would transfer, transfer fund balance from the facilities capital fund to the police and fire property acquisition funds for the purpose of public safety, capital needs as identified in the 2022-2027 citywide CIP. The total amounts are $1.7 million being transferred, $850,000 to police property acquisition, $850,000 to fire property acquisition. Happy to answer any questions.
We're good. Thanks, Paul.
Next special budget ordinance, Traffic Calming Measures Fund regarding pedestrian safety at crosswalks. In addition to that is a resolution regarding the approval of a three-year community crosswalk fund to be paid through the Traffic Calming Measures Fund for up to $300,000. Both of those items are represented by Councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is over three years for both of the street murals program, which we already adopted earlier, and this is just getting it through the SBO, and then $300,000 for community crosswalks. The resolution also calls for a rainbow crosswalk to be the first crosswalk with community outreach. That's been ongoing since Saturday. Spokane Pride has posted a survey, getting, ranking it, it's been on the news, too, and they got over 1,200 responses just since Saturday. So, pretty exciting for locations, but I'll keep you updated as we're doing that.
So, I guess, so, I guess what I'm wondering, do we, is there, so I don't have the briefing paper in front of me, but is there a breakdown of what the actual costs are? Because a million dollars for some paint seems like a lot of money.
It's six crosswalks for, each of these is just different things. So, the 672, Sean would know that better, but that was for across the neighborhoods over three years, and then the maximum $50,000 per crosswalk.
Okay.
And that includes removal and all of that, too, and staffing, and design, and engineering, and all that.
So, we're, we're doing the design work on these, too?
Spokane Arts is doing that. And so, it's contracting with them.
Okay.
Special paint.
It is special paint.
Must be some real special paint. Pretty pricey.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zepone. Our next resolution regarding amendment to the City of Spokane Water and Hydro-Elective Department for a fee and cost schedule to reflect the current escalation of costs for this year. Marlene Feist.
So, thank you, Councilmembers. And one more time, as we discussed in both the April, and I think we saw, this was also on the May's, at least Pi's consent portion, but we have seen an increase in costs related to just the purchase of goods, as Lauren just mentioned, around copper pipe. So, we have updated our fee schedule to reflect those costs so that people are paying for the actual cost of the supplies that, that we have to buy to do those water taps, and they vary depending on the size of the tap.
So, I guess what I don't understand, and I was emailing Laurel earlier to try and get some answers on this, so I understand the material costs have gone up, but why are we increasing the actual tap fees? I don't really understand. I mean, I understand charging more for, you know, the, the different piping materials and what, and whatnot, but the, the fee just to tap the pipe, I don't really understand why we're going to raise that, and pretty significantly, too, and that just raises the cost of, of the house. I mean, that's all that does.
I'm sorry, Councilmember. Those fees are only our costs. There's, there's nothing else built into that. When a developer builds, there is a tap fee. We call it a fee here. It's the developer's tap permit.
Yeah.
Included in that is only an hour for our crew to go there, the equipment time and the materials. There, there's no additional added into that.
And the, the material is just the meter, right? Really?
There's, there's several parts in all of, if, if it's a tap, the saddle, the corp, the copper, the curb stop, the curb box. There's several parts involved in it. In, in those adjustments that we're coming forward with today was only the thing that changed in it was the cost of materials.
So, the, the tap fee increase is only reflecting an increase in materials?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Boy.
Council President Protam, the final two items, final reading ordinances relating to membership terms, Spokane Park Board members, and the vacation from Napa Street to, from Pinecrest Avenue, were both briefed a few moments ago by Mr. Jones and Mr. Brown, respectively. So, that concludes our advanced agenda for Monday, June 13th.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Wonderful. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, anything else? Miss Sister? Okay. We are adjourned until 6 o'clock. You have about an hour, give or take 10 minutes. Until then, we'll see you then. Thank you.